Welcome and thank you for being here this evening, Wednesday, September 19th, 2018, for the Berkeley City Council Districts 4, 7, and 8 candidate forum. My name is Teresa Nelson, I’m a member of the Legal Reproporters in Oakland, here tonight on behalf of the Legal Reproporters of Berkeley Albany at Emeryville. The Legal Reproporters is an all parts of organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not support or oppose candidates or parties. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as ballot measures, however, this forum, which is presented by the Labor Services and Education Arm of the League, does not take positions or advocate for them. I’d like to remind everyone that the candidates and our co-sponsors, the Berkeley and the WACP, and the Berkeley City College of Voter Friendly Campus Initiative, have all agreed to participate under the ground rules set for this forum. These ground rules are posted outside the forums. Please take a moment to switch off all your electronic devices to silent. Campaign literature or other forms of campaigning such as buttons, t-shirts, signs, lights, et cetera are not permitted inside the boardroom in order to maintain neutrality. We are videotaping tonight’s forum, broadcasting through Berkeley Community Media, and this session will be available on our website, l w v b a e dot org, or through votersedge.org/ca. You can tweet us during the forum, at l w v b a e. We also ask that audience members hold their claws until the end, so we can hear all of the candidates’ call. We have three forums on the agenda tonight. The first will be for Berkeley City Council District 4. There are three candidates running for this seat. They are Ben Gould, Kate Harrison, and Gregory McGoughnay. The second forum this evening will be for Berkeley City Council District 7. There are three candidates running for that seat. They are Eden Hill, Rachel Robinson, and Cecilia Cess Rosales. The final forum this evening will be for Berkeley City Council District 8. There are four candidates running for that seat. They are Lori Drosit, Mary Kay Lacy, Russ Tillman, and Alfred Tuohy. Some people may only stay for one forum. If you do wish to leave, I ask that you do so quietly, so that we can make a smooth transition to the next forum. Now let’s go over the ground rules. Each candidate has one minute for his own opening remarks. The order was determined by John Boss. The timekeepers in the front row will signal candidates with colored signs marked “one minute, thirty seconds, fifteen seconds, and stop.” As audience members arrive, our volunteers provide a card for submitting written questions. You may continue to submit questions throughout the evening. Please include the district number on the card, so that we can make sure you’ll be asked the question during a correct forum. The questions will be screened to avoid duplication and any personal attacks. The order of answering the questions will be alternated, and each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. We will ask as many questions as we can. Again, the timekeeper will signal the candidates. There will be no separate rebuttals, however, the candidates may choose to use some or all of their one minute to rebut the response given by another candidate. Following the questions, each candidate will have one and a half minutes for closing statement. Now, let’s begin with our Berkeley City Council District 4 candidate forum, and each candidate will give an opening statement of one minute. We will begin with Ben Gould, followed by Gregory McGoughnay, and finally Kate Harrison. Timer, are you, you’re ready? Great, so we have one minute. Mr. Gould, please begin.
Good evening, and thank you all for coming out here and being here tonight. My name is Ben Gould, and I’m running for Berkeley City Council in District 4, the greater downtown neighborhood. I’m running for city council because Berkeley is my home. I was born here at Altobates, attended Berkeley High School. I earned my master’s degrees in public policy at UC Berkeley, as well as in environmental engineering. And I’ve served as Chair of the State’s Environmental Commission, worked as legislative aide in Berkeley City Hall, and I currently work as a sustainability policy analyst for the city and county of San Francisco. My top three priorities in this race are working regionally and collaboratively to effectively end long-term homelessness in Berkeley, making sure we address public safety by working with our first responders, and creating green and affordable homes for everyone in our community to address displacement and protect Berkeley’s values. I’m proud to have the endorsements of the Berkeley Democratic Club, of the Berkeley Firefighters Association, of Oakland Mayor Libby Schaaf, four current and former council members, seven ASUC senators, two dozen commissioners, and three dozen District 4 neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto Mr. McGoughnay.
Good evening, everyone. I’m Greg McGoughnay. Thank you so much for being here. I recognize many of you from much of my work that I’ve done in the city for the past few years. So, I originally came here sixteen years ago, and like many people here tonight, and many people I’ve met walking the district, I decided to stay. Berkeley is a great place, and I had a great opportunity as a first-generation college student, children of immigrants, to come and be a part of this amazing city with amazing ideas, people, food, and culture. And it’s a place that I’ve decided that I want to make my home. And I’ve been very involved in the community. I’ve served on numerous nonprofit boards and city commissions, and I also served in the former mayor’s office. Right now, we’re in a place where Berkeley’s starting to change, and it’s becoming more unaffordable, and I see my friends leave every week. My top priorities are housing affordability, climate change, and diversity. And I ask you to join me in making a difference, and we need to start now.
Thank you. And on to Ms. Harrison.
Hello, I’m Kate Harrison, the incumbent in District 4. I’m ready to continue the leadership I’ve shown in the eighteen months I’ve been on council. For example, we have near unanimous votes from my colleagues, from my leadership, on doubling the amount of affordable housing produced in the city through increasing the amount of ADUs, in-laws, other kinds of alternative housing forms, and through finding landlords that keep vacant units dilapidated sometimes for years. We also have shown great collaboration in ensuring that most projects that come to us on appeal are approved. I’ve also shown real climate leadership in declaring a climate emergency, ensuring that we have stronger green building standards, and looking towards banning factory farming, and how we can move to a more plant-based diet. Finally, I’ve shown leadership in public safety through increasing the likelihood that Altobates will stay in our town, through community policing, through more bike and pedestrian patrols in the downtown, and through tackling the racial disparities and work by ICE to harm our immigrant brothers and sisters. I look for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. And on to the questions. Thank you so much. Again, each person will have one minute to respond to the question, and we’ll begin with Mr. McGoughnay. Each person will respond to the same question. How will you address public safety and the rising rates of crime in the downtown area? Go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. So, I think that one of the first things that we need to acknowledge is that we have a staffing crisis with both our police department and our fire department. So what’s happening now is even though we have a lot of positions open, we’re having trouble attracting people and retaining them. Part of the reason that we’re having trouble with the police department right now is that their morale is a little bit down, and we put a lot of constraints on them to protect our citizens’ rights, which I believe is the right thing to do. Because of that, we have attracted a really strong, a very educated workforce who really cares about the community, and I think what we need to do is look at ways that we can make them part of our community, and look at ways that both our firefighters and our police department can come and live in our community, and they can be supported, and that way, they’ll interact more with people all around.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison?
Yes, one of my first initiatives was to ask that we restore the bike and pedestrian patrols downtown, because I believe community policing, where the police are closer to the community, is better for them and better for the community. We’ve also provided significant raises, because our police, we are having a recruitment and retention problem, as many departments are. You’ve seen the signs, “Come Work for BART,” in our own town, and we are looking to try to recruit and retain officers here. We’ve also worked very hard on our sidewalk policy, which we voted on in April unanimously, which deals with problematic street behavior and tries to limit people living on our streets from engaging in activity that impede homeowners and businesses. And finally, we’ve been working on real community preparedness for emergencies. In the case of an earthquake, the police won’t be there immediately, the fire department won’t be there. We have to rely on ourselves and our employees. One thing I did this year was ensure that all city employees received training in earthquake preparedness. I was at San Francisco City Hall when the earthquake happened. I was alone. I had no training. We don’t want to repeat that. Thank you.
Thank you. And on to Mr. Gould.
Berkeley has seen double-digit increases in violent crime every year for the last three years. Some of this is due to national trends, but part of it’s also due to the fact that Berkeley Police is currently understaffed. We have budgeted for over one hundred and eighty officers, and we have less than one hundred and sixty actively on the force right now. And in large parts, it’s because the police officers are unable to recruit. I got an Nixle alert the other day saying, “Berkeley PDS hiring, come work for us. Please, we need you.” We have seen that despite having funding for more police officers, we haven’t been able to hire them, and this is probably in large part because the current council, including the incumbent, have not worked to support our police officers. When the police asked to be allowed to use pepper spray when breaking up fights between the alt-right and the far-left in downtown Berkeley, which is where I live, the incumbent in this race voted against giving them pepper spray, instead leaving them only to use rubber bullets and batons, which is not in line with our values. Bike and ped patrols will never come back to Berkeley until we have fully-staffed police department, and the police have endorsed anybody but the incumbent in this race, because their policies have been so damaging for the morale.
Thank you. On to the next question about the housing issue. What would you do to address the housing crisis in Berkeley? Not only for middle-income residents who don’t qualify for housing subsidies, but also for our children to be able to live here in the future. And we’ll begin with Ms. Harrison.
Thank you very much. As you know, the council has placed a $135 million housing bond on this November ballot. This is the down payment for our families to be able to stay in Berkeley, as well as new arrivals and students who are having a horrible time finding housing in our town. We have been working on, as I said, alternative forms of housing, such as in-law units. We believe that we can produce another 3,000 of these units, backyard cottages, and bring out from the shadows units that have been built illegally, and make those available for tenants. We’ve also been working on alternative types of housing, very important. Housing is expensive. We’ve been looking into how to build tiny homes. I created standards that will allow the construction of tiny homes and modular units in Berkeley, something that had not been done before. So we, and we have to look therefore at money, places to put the housing, and alternative forms of housing, and that’s what I’ve done.
Thank you. On to Mr. Gould.
A $135 million housing bond is great, but I hope it’s more than just a down payment on what could be a trillion dollars of affordable housing needs. I think we really need to work, to find ways to make sure the private sector does its part in building affordable housing in our community, and that requires the city council willing to say yes to housing when it comes with some affordable housing attached to it. The incumbent actually voted against a housing project, in part because of its bulk and density, and voted for a lower-density option because it had less affordable housing units on-site. That doesn’t help people like myself, who are born and raised here in Berkeley, find a home in order to stay in our community. Additionally, we need alternative types of housing, but we also need regular types of housing, too. Not everyone can qualify to live in subsidized affordable housing, and in fact, the vast majority of students don’t qualify for this. This is why State Senator Nancy Skinner, who endorsed me previously, wrote a bill in the state legislature this year, SB 1227, to create student affordable housing with a student density bonus, which the incumbent also voted against supporting, and hopefully she’ll be able to answer why she did that later on.
Thank you. Mr. McGoughnay?
Yes, thank you for the question. I think this question is very interesting, because I am one of those children that is talked about in this question. I grew up in Alameda, and right now I live in a rent-controlled apartment, and there’s no chance for me, on my middle-income nonprofit salary, to ever buy anything here. So I think what’s really important is that we just need to acknowledge that we need to build housing. Downtown has a voter-approved downtown plan that went through over a hundred community meetings, and it told us where we want our building to happen. So we want our building to happen downtown in the core, by BART stations, by transit, and along our transit corridors. I think we also need to reexamine our neighborhoods and look at very gentle density. So, we can look at ADUs, we can look at legalizing duplexes, which exist in many, many areas. You can’t even tell from the outside they’re just as charming. We also need to look at new forms of housing where people are protected, like social housing and co-ops and land trusts.
Thank you. Next question, we’ll begin with Mr. Gould. What is your position on sanctioned encampments? Have you ever supported a homeless encampment in downtown Berkeley?
I live in downtown Berkeley, and so the homelessness issue affects me personally on a daily basis. I have people sleeping and sometimes defecating in my doorway. I pass people every day on the way to and from BART, and we really need effective and compassionate solutions to homelessness that don’t rely upon sanctioned encampments as our only treatment. I’m a strong advocate for regional and collaborative approaches to building more housing for the homeless throughout Alameda County, which is why I’ve been endorsed by both Oakland Mayor Libby Schaaf and Emeryville Mayor John Botters, because working regionally is the only way to really effectively solve this problem. The incumbent has stated in other cases where she supports sanctioned encampments, and I look forward to hearing her answer on that. We’ve had some encampments in downtown Berkeley that have not worked out well in the past. We’ve seen fires started, we’ve had attempted murders in downtown Berkeley. I think it’s really important that we make sure that people who are homeless have the social services and care that they need, which they can get in support of serving with wraparound housing, with wraparound services, which they don’t get in encampments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGoughnay?
Yes, so I think we’re at a very, very, very strange point right now. So where we are right now, just in general in the region, we don’t have enough housing. So when we look at our programs and what we’re doing for our homeless population, we are giving them services, but what’s happened is we’ve gone to putting them into housing as quickly as possible to now just trying to get them on benefits, like SSI and disability. But the problem is, there’s nowhere to put them. What we really need to look at is how we can work regionally to build more housing, to help house these people, because otherwise, we’re just throwing money with results that we don’t actually quantify right now. I think at this point, we should examine a pilot for a sanctioned encampment. There are a lot of concerns in the neighborhood about safety, and I share those concerns, but it’s something that maybe we should consider.
Thank you. On to Ms. Harrison.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think that we have to recognize building housing is the number-one way to deal with homelessness, but it’s not going to happen overnight. There are a thousand people living on our streets today. We have to provide services to them and figure out humane approaches. One possible approach that was supported by myself and other council people and sent to the homeless commission was to develop a program for sanctioned encampments at locations chosen by the city, in a size determined by the city, with behavioral rules and sanitation services. I am not in favor of encampments just placing themselves wherever they see fit to do that. Also, the Pathways Project has provided housing now for forty-five people, seven of whom have made exits to permanent housing. It is through these transitional housing approaches that we can get people housed. You can’t go immediately from the street to housing that does not exist. Most of those people are being housed outside of Berkeley, and I think that’s appropriate. We need to admit that we are an expensive city, and people may need to live elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. On to beginning again with Mr. McGoughnay this time. Are you familiar with the priorities in Berkeley’s Climate Action Plan, and how would you act on and address those priorities?
Yes, I am very familiar with the priorities of the Climate Action Plan, and also very familiar with our goal that we’re not going to meet to reduce our GHG emissions. So if you look at where we are actually not meeting our goals, the two biggest places are building energy use and transportation. And while, and I’m going to say that our transportation emissions are very, very much linked to housing, but I also have ideas for what to do about transportation. We really need to look at our roads and our bike infrastructure. Right now, according to the bike plan update in 2017, there are 60% of people who are curious but concerned about biking, so we really need to look at how to make it safer. Every day, I see parents with their little kids on the back of their cargo bikes, I see seniors biking, that’s one way to do it, and we also need to look at building energy use, not just for new buildings, but how we can make existing multifamily buildings more energy-efficient.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison?
Yes, Berkeley is the second city under my leadership to declare a climate emergency. We held a 15-city seminar recently, prior to the governor’s CCAS, in order to say, “We want to come off fossil fuels more quickly.” We are showing the leadership that needs to happen in this area. Recently, we passed a Green Monday initiative, which is encouraging us to move away from factory farming and towards a plant-based diet, and encouraging people to understand what resources are available to do that. We are also working on building housing near transit, which includes not just the downtown. Our district has 60% of the housing that’s been built, has been built in District 4. Many other districts, such as District 8, which have a conveniently-located BART station, have refused to build housing. Finally, we need to work on stop signs and making sure that these bike paths are safe. We changed the stop sign criteria to recognize that bicyclists, seniors, and children are using these areas, and that stop signs are not just appropriate when there’s a lot of traffic. We have to make the safe choice for our biking and pedestrian community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gould?
I work on climate change impacts every single day as a sustainability analyst for the city and county of San Francisco at San Francisco International Airport. I also serve on the Environmental Commission as former chair. I can tell you that Berkeley’s Climate Action Plan says that we will reduce emissions by 30% below 1990 levels, 33% below 1990 levels, by 2030, and 80% by 2050, and we are nowhere on track to meeting those goals. Berkeley’s emissions come from three major sources. Number one is transportation emissions. People driving their internal combustion engine gasoline-powered cars, who’s more than 40% of our emissions. More than 30% comes from natural gas used in buildings, and more than 10% comes from electricity use. With Alameda County’s Community Choice Energy System coming online the next year, we’ll have clean electricity, but we are doing next to nothing to effectively address vehicle emissions. District 8 doesn’t have a BART station, it’s District 4, 5, and 3 that have BART stations in them, and we need to make sure, sorry, 4, 1, and 3 that have BART stations in them, and we need to make sure we create more housing near BART so people don’t have to drive to get to work, to get to school, to get to the grocery store, and instead walk, take BART, bus, or bike.
Thank you. On to the next question, we’ll begin this one with Ms. Harrison. What would you or could you do about pension liabilities in the city?
Yep, this is an area in which I have a lot of expertise. I ran the $17 billion budget for this, $1.7 billion budget for the state court system, and pension liabilities are besetting all government agencies. We didn’t get here in a day, we’re not going to get out of this in a day, but we have to start chipping away at this problem. One thing our council did under my leadership again is to set aside $3.5 million in a trust fund that starts to whittle away at the pension liabilities that we have in the city. We also have a desperate problem with retiree health costs. The only ways to deal with that are to deal with national health, frankly, and also to work towards joining us with Medicare and limiting the costs that we have for healthcare. That’s something I’ve worked with our unions on very much. It’s one thing to say, “Let’s make the employees pay more.” I would like to say, “Let’s make the healthcare system cheaper and more efficient for all of us.” Those two liabilities alone are huge, but they’re not the end of the world. We have a $600 million pension liability, but about 20 million of it is on a yearly basis. We are starting to tackle that problem, and I’m very proud of our record in that.
Thank you. Mr. Gould?
Berkeley’s over half a billion dollar pension liability can really only be met by spending more money on pensions, essentially. And, you know, as a young person, as a government employee who has potentially a pension someday in my future myself, I think it’s important to protect retiree benefits for existing and past employees of the city and county of Berkeley. The three ways we can meet our funding needs for pensions is either cutting existing services, raising taxes, or spending our base overall. I don’t think we should cut down our services, we don’t have enough police and fire as it is, we don’t have enough money for libraries or roads. Berkeley voters are also facing significant tax increases right now with the Measure T-1, which was passed two years ago, Measure, the Affordable Housing Bond measure that’s coming about this year. And so I think the most effective way for us to really meet our pension obligations is by expanding the tax base and working to find ways to create more either revenue-generating businesses for the city, or simply creating new construction in the city that brings in more revenue through reassessed and higher-value taxes. My opponent’s appointee to the zoning board recently voted down a proposal to build new housing on an old gas station, which provided a lot of new revenue for the city, and unfortunately, we don’t have that.
Thank you. Mr. McGoughnay?
Yes, thank you. With pension liabilities, I agree with what both of them have said, and I also agree that I think it’s very important that we continue to offer pensions to our public employees. As a young person who didn’t really know what a pension was until I had a job with the city, I think it’s very important that we keep pensions, especially if we want to attract a young workforce as our community and our economy changes. What I think is very important to look at is what was mentioned earlier, we need to up our revenues. And part of upping our revenues is looking at what kind of economy we have. So I’m proud that when I worked for Mayor Bates, I worked on the startup economy and worked with the startup cluster. So I think looking at having more businesses here, also building more housing and getting more tax revenues from the business license tax and from rental fees will help us.
Thank you. The next question, we’ll start with Mr. Gould. Do you support legislation that gives consumers the right to know about the animal products they purchase in terms of animal cruelty and conditions, impact on the environment, antibiotic use, and propensity to cause cancer? Mr. Gould?
I am personally a vegetarian, so yes, I don’t have any objection to this kind of legislation. But I want to sort of get back to the, not to put it too spoilt up, but the meat of the matter, which is, we’re talking about greenhouse gas emissions. Really, most of Berkeley’s emissions come from driving existing buildings, and some of it from electricity. And while things like banning factory farming and supporting urban farms are really great, and consumers absolutely should know the quality of life the animals live before they consume their dead flesh, I really think we want to have really meaningful impacts on the environment. We have to look at what we can do locally in terms of getting people out of their cars, helping them walk, take transit, and bike. And frankly, the incumbent’s record on this isn’t all that strong. She’s opposed affordable housing near BART, her appointees have voted down housing near BART, she’s voted against supporting a student affordable housing, and this isn’t the kind of approach we need to really address our climate challenge. I’m proud to have been endorsed by Barack Obama’s former science envoy at the State Department, UC Berkeley professor Dan Kimmern, who I actually did research with in his lab for my master’s thesis on how cities can address their climate emissions by working to increase density and supporting transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGoughnay?
Yes, the answer is absolutely, I support people’s right to know where food comes from and what goes into it. I’m very careful, thank you Berkeley, Berkeley is what made me this way, very careful about what products I use on my own body, so I think it’s extra important that we know what kind of products go into the bodies of the bodies we put into our bodies. So I think this is, not only is it important that animals are treated humanely, it’s also very important that we look at the kinds of things that are going to animal, into animals’ bodies, like the antibiotics and the hormones, because if we look at health statistics across the country and across Western nations, it’s really affecting the way that children are growing, and the pituitary glands, and puberty, and it’s really a health risk that we haven’t analyzed yet. I also, while I was on the Community Environmental Advisory Commission, I worked on labeling seafood and knowing where seafood comes from. So we did a pilot on that, I’m not sure what happened to it, but I really support knowing where food comes from.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison.
Absolutely, and I’ve already pledged to co-sponsor the legislation when I get re-elected. I want to say on building, what we are looking at is building a community, not just building at any cost. We’ve seen these buildings go up that have luxury units, and we’re not getting the affordable housing out of it that we deserve. We’re not getting the labor jobs out of it that we deserve. We need to focus on building affordability into what we do, which is why we doubled the percentage of units that are affordable. It is true, in the very long run, that building more housing might reduce costs, a little difficult in the University Town with a constant inflow of students who are desperate for housing. But even if it were true, it’s in the long run. In the short term, we are losing our diversity, we are losing the affordable housing that we need for our children, our artists, the people that make our town what it is, and we are losing the ability to build buildings that meet our design standards. I feel strongly that we have not actually turned down any student housing. We sponsored a bill on student housing now with Councilmember Worthington. What we said no to is the state imposing building standards on us.
Thank you. The next question, we’ll start with Mr. McGoughnay. Do you support Berkeley’s rent control ordinance?
I think that this might be asking if I support the future Berkeley rent control ordinance. As I said earlier, I am a person who lives in a rent-controlled unit, and that’s what’s keeping me in Berkeley. I do support rent control. I think that it really has kept, as I’ve been walking, I’ve been meeting a lot of families and a lot of seniors who are in rentals, I didn’t realize they were in rentals, but that’s the only way that they can stay here. I think what we really need to do is look at how we’re building housing. One thing I talked about earlier was social models of housing, and in the past, Berkeley did work on co-ops and land trusts. And with did work on co-ops and land trusts, and with those types of housing, you're part owner of it, or you own it, so that you aren't at risk of displacement. I also think that we need to make sure that we look at paths to ownership for low-income and middle-income people, because the greatest guard against displacement is ownership.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison, please.
Yes, I absolutely support rent control. In fact, I worked on the first rent control measure in Berkeley, Measure D, in 1979. I think importantly too is to talk about eviction protections. This is where we see the real problem, regardless of whether Prop 10 passes, and I hope that it does. Effective construction, effective evictions by landlords where excuses are made, I'm taking your laundry, I'm taking your parking, I'm making your life hell so people move out and the rents can be increased, are on the rise in Berkeley. This is what we should be focused on. Under my leadership again, we put aside $600,000 for attorneys to defend tenants in these eviction cases. We have also worked on the tenant ownership piece mentioned by Mr. McGoughne, I set aside $1 million for the small-site program where nonprofits will buy housing and keep it affordable forever with tenant participation. Those are the kinds of things we need to be doing, we need to support Prop 10, and we need to support our measure on the local ballot that will help implement Prop 10. Thank you.
Mr. Gould.
As a renter, protected by rent control, which my apartment is finally now affordable to me after four years, three years of grad school, now that I actually have a real job, I can finally afford my own apartment, which is great, I strongly support Berkeley's rent control measure. And up on the stage, we have two candidates, myself and Mr. McGoughne, who I've endorsed as well, who are renters protected by rent control, and we have a luxury homeowner as well. And I think it's kind of ironic that the luxury homeowner who came here to Berkeley from another city as a student is now the one saying, we shouldn't build any more homes, we have to make sure they're subsidized affordable homes for people who make low income. If all we built were subsidized affordable homes, I wouldn't be able to have moved to Berkeley, because I wasn't a low-income person when I first moved here. I was, in fact, unemployed, and so I wouldn't have qualified for just low income, I would have been extremely low-income. The other fact of the matter is that when it comes to rent control protecting tenants, the best way to protect tenants is to make landlords the ones competing for tenants, and not tenants competing for landlords. That requires creating more housing, and that's the policy that's been endorsed by the UC Berkeley Displacement Project. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll have the last question before our closing statements. Do you believe, and we'll start with Ms. Harrison, do you believe that the city should do something to stop or slow the expansion of UC Berkeley and its enrollment?
I believe that we should demand that Berkeley build more of its own housing, UC Berkeley. There are many places, we have four opportunity sites that were negotiated in the Long Range Development Plan that could have housing now, and they're not building on those places, they're waiting for these, this Uber project where they can put thousands and thousands of units instead of taking advantage of what they have today. I do also believe we should renegotiate our Long Range Development Plan, which comes up in 2020. We are getting a paltry $135,000 for sewers and practically nothing for anything else out of UC. They have real impacts on our city. But do I believe in limiting enrollment? No, because the students are our future, and they're part of our community. We need to have housing, we need to participate in that through more student housing now, but we also need the demand that the university do its part, which it has not done. Thank you.
And Mr. Gould.
As a former UC Berkeley student, no, I don't believe we should limit enrollment. I think UC Berkeley is one of the number-one ways of generating opportunity for young people in California, and that as California's estate grows, we should expect the UC Berkeley to grow as well, otherwise making it more exclusive, which goes against our values of Berkeley. Students are our community, which is why I'm proud to have been endorsed by seven, actually nine, current and former ASUC senators, and in fact, students make up a large part of the district, with more than half the voters in this district being under the age of 35. I think it's really important that we work with the university to find ways so we can help have it create more housing, much of it will be in or around District Four, and I'm disappointed the incumbent actually hasn't attended most of the UC City Student Relations Meetings in the last year. I think it's really important to engage with the student community and the university community in making sure that we have good relationships with them. Lastly, I think that UC Berkeley is a really unique opportunity in providing housing for its students. I actually support their plan to go ahead and build on all sites at once, because I think that doing a piecemeal approach will result in higher costs for our students and a less effective planning by the university. If they know they're going to have all the housing ready in one shot, then we can make sure that students get into that and make more housing available for everyone else in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGoughne.
While I understand the concern with what's going on with our city, I do not think that the city should try to stop or slow the expansion of UC Berkeley. I think when we are asking this question, we're really looking at how it's affecting our housing market, but we also have to look at what really the UC does for us. The UC was here before us, or we built around the UC, and the UC, this UC is one of, recognizes one in the country of, one of the universities in the country that offers the best opportunities for low-income, first-generation students like myself. So I think with this public good in mind, we have to think about the promise that was made back with the Golden State, where education was supposed to be free for people of all ages, or for everyone who's a student, and right now, there isn't enough space in the UCs for California kids, and I think it's really important that people who grew up here get to go to school here.
Thank you. And that was our last question. We'll now move on to the closing statements. We'll do this in the reverse order with which we began, so we'll begin with Ms. Harrison.
Thank you very much for your attention this evening, I really appreciate it. I think what we've been, what we've seen tonight is an attempt to divide us, when what I'm looking for is an attempt to unite us. We've been offered a lot of false choices, choices between tenants and homeowners, choices between public safety and our constitutional rights, choices between looking at each project for its environmental sensitivity and economic development. Being in government means that we have to make the choices that invest in all of the areas we're interested in. We have to build buildings that are environmentally sensitive, we have to expand policing, but recognize that we need to protect the constitutional rights, and recognize that people in our community, some feel strongly that they are not protected and are victimized twice by the police, or not being, by not being willing to call the police. We have to recognize that this issue of tenants versus homeowners is a politics of envy that I don't think we should be engaging in. I think all of us should be working together to involve ourselves in how do we produce more housing? How do we deal with the poor people that are unfortunately living in our streets? How do we work together to create environmental stewardship? What are the things we can do together? What are the daily decisions we could make? Finally, I'd like to say that being a councilperson involves a million daily things that you do for constituents, and that's where our office shines. We have looked into the unsafe pipeline under Berkeley High School, we have dealt with getting more trash cans on North Shattuck, and we have dealt with just the millions and millions of calls and letters that we get every day trying to improve the life of our city. Everything is not about the big-picture economics over which we have very little control. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGoughne.
Yes, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, and I want to, I want everyone to think about what kind of Berkeley we want to be. So where we are right now is a Berkeley that has become more unaffordable and less diverse. If we want to make sure that we continue to uphold our Berkeley values of being a leader in climate change and diversity and new ideas, and having, taking stands on environmental and human rights, we need to make sure that the people who have these ideas have a voice in the city. We need to make sure that people of all incomes are still able to live here. We need to make sure that our teachers are able to live here, our firefighters, our police officers, our artists, our nonprofit workers, and to do that, we really need to look at building housing, and we need to look at what kind of housing we're building. Private development is part of the solution. In Berkeley, we make sure when we build private development that money goes into public development, and we can use those funds, and we can reexamine what requirements we have, so that we can make sure that we expand our requirements from only the lower, low-income to middle-income people to make sure that we keep diversity. And this is all very, very linked to climate change, and how much people have to commute, and whether you can just walk to your job, which is really important. So I ask for your support this November.
Thank you very much. I want to note that we'll be moving on to the next forum in a moment. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Oh my gosh, I am so sorry. I checked that off prematurely. Mr. Gould, please.
Thank you. My name is Ben Gould, and I'm running for Berkeley City Council in the Greater Downtown Neighborhood, District Four. Berkeley is my home. I was born in Alto Bates, attended Berkeley High School, and earned a master's degrees in public policy and environmental engineering from UC Berkeley. I care deeply about the future of this community, because I want to be able to stay in here for the rest of my life. It's where I grew up, it's where I made friends, it's where I have long memories, and I believe that Berkeley's future can be a bright opportunity for new people to come here and existing ones to create new opportunities for themselves. As former chair of SEAC, I worked hard to protect our downtown from cigarette butt pollution, as well as making sure we have strong green building standards for our new construction. I've also served in the Police Review Commission, the Zoning Adjustments Board, and the Housing Advisor Commission, where I worked hard to make sure that Berkeley's police are held to high standards, our zoning is met, and we create new housing opportunities for new people, and that we make sure we find other ways to create housing in our community as well. I'm proud to have worked as legislative aide for Councilmember Lori Droste, who I'm proud to have her reendorsement for the third time this time, as well as to currently work as a sustainability analyst at San Francisco International Airport. I want to make sure we work regionally collaboratively to create new housing, affordable housing for the homeless, make sure we create affordable housing in our community here in Berkeley, and make sure we address public safety by working with our first responders and not against them. I'm proud to have endorsed by the Berkeley Democratic Club, Oakland Mayor Libby Schaaf, Berkeley Firefighters Association, four current and former councilmembers, seven ASUC senators, and dozens of commissioners, community leaders up there in your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of the League, I want to thank all of you who submitted questions for our candidates tonight, because we're grateful to have them here to answer your questions. Please join me in thanking the candidates for their time this evening. We'll have our next set of candidates up in a moment. I'll remind you that if you have a question that you would like to have asked this evening, please fill it out, and one of our question sorters will pick it up, and we will do our very best to ask every question that is submitted this evening. Oh, and please write the district if it is specific to a district.